Fighting for the values that make Nebraska the good life. This is Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald on 1499 three K L I N.
Absolutely repulsive. That's how we're going to start out the show today. I think this is something that's been swept under the rug, pushed to the background. There's been so much news. I mean, what we're on the doorstep of World War III. We had the debate last night, Hurricane Helene. I mean, you just go on. The list goes on. It's October. It is not a surprise. It is October. And I think we have started it hot and it's going to end hot as well. And now we haven't really talked about this much on the show with P Diddy because it's repulsive. When you learn about what these allegations are, and obviously there's a lot of evidence that's already out there, but I believe there's something, it's something we need to explore a little bit today. Because I really think this is going to impact people in so many different ways. It's going to impact all of us. Because these people that are going to be implicated are people coming from all different walks of life. All part of P D's ring of illegal sex, extortion, pedophilia, sex trafficking, so much more. As a matter of fact, he was accused of sexually assaulting 25 minors right now, including a nine year old. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. And this has a potential of bringing some very prominent people crashing down, which I believe it's going to impact the election coming up, just my thoughts, including a lot of political leaders. As we head into that November election. So yesterday, which most people have not heard, yesterday, Texas based attorney Tony Busby announced at a news conference that he's representing 120 individuals in civil lawsuits for these horrifying allegations spanning for the last three decades, 30 years. And I want to play a clip from this news conference because I think the implications from this are huge. And then I'll give you my reaction.
Many of you came here thinking or hoping, perhaps believing that I may start naming names. That day will come, but it won't be today. The day will come when we will name names other than Sean Combs, and there's a lot of names. It's a long list already. And of course, I already know who some of these individuals are. But because of the nature of this case, we're going to make damn sure, damn sure that we're right before we do that. But the names that we're going to name, assuming that our investigators confirm and corroborate what we've been told are names that will shock you. These are individual cases. There are indeed other perpetrators involved. They will be revealed when that particular individual case is ready to be filed. They already know who they are. And I'm talking here about not just the cowardly, but complicit bystanders. That is those people that we know watched this behavior occur and did nothing. And I'm talking about the people that participated, encouraged it, egged it on. They know who they are. I call them the facilitators of foul play, willing participants in vile conduct. As we identify them, each will be part of this case as defendants. These defendants will not only include individuals, but would also include corporate entities who ultimately profited off of this culture and behavior. I'm looking at banks, pharmaceutical companies, hotels. We know that many of these individuals were paid cash. We know that, that many of these individuals involved, whether they were the ones being assaulted and abused, or they're witnessing other people being assaulted and abused, and then paid and threatened and told to leave. Typically paid 10 grand in cash and told to leave. And then threatened as they were leaving. So in addition to Sean Combs, you should know the defendants in these cases we're going to file will include anyone, of course, who engaged in the assault or exploitation, anyone who participated in such in any way, anyone who encouraged or facilitated this conduct, anyone who was in the room and watched it happen, but made no effort to stop it, any venue or venue owner who was aware of what was going on, but failed to stop it, any individual or entity who knew about the conduct and benefited from it, but did nothing to report it or stop it, and any individual or entity who covered it up or helped cover it up. These people who know who they are should just come forward now. I would imagine as we speak here, there are a myriad of people who are very nervous. You can't hide skeletons in the closet forever. I would expect there are many people out there right now who are, who are desperately searching their memories as they delete their texts and data. Now, although these are in fact, individual cases, there is a common theme, an MO, if you will. Typically, the victim is lured into a situation where he or she is given a drink. Typically, that drink reported by these victims is apparently laced with something. Once that drink takes effect, the perpetrators perform all kinds of sexual acts on the victims, many times passing him or her around. As other people watch and enjoy the show and then leave the victim ashamed, confused, injured, and wondering what happened. When the victim reaches out, he or she is told not to say anything. Sometimes there are threats of physical violence or financial repercussions or bodily harm. The claims we intend to bring will include the following violent sexual assault or rape, sexual abuse, facilitated sex with a controlled substance, false imprisonment, compelling prostitution, sexual misconduct, dissemination of video recordings, false imprisonment, sexual abuse of minors. Given the large volume of cases and given our other docket obligations, and given the fact that we want to be sure when we file these cases that they are fully vetted, I expect we'll start filing these cases against Sean Combs and other perpetrators within the next 30 days.
So as we look at this, the reason why I bring this up is we, we've talked about it Drive Time Nebraska to be a watchman, to look at what's happening underneath the surface. And this has been happening all across, and you know, the reason why this really irritates me is I'm a huge supporter of I've Got A Name, ending sex trafficking right here in Lincoln and in Nebraska. And this is part of that whole process. So my hope is this, if these allegations are found true in any way, no matter who they are, I hope that they truly prosecute to the full extent. I don't ever think I've ever heard a prosecutor or attorney talk like this in, in this clear terms. So it's something that I really want to focus on down the road as this happens. I think we're going to be impacted in October. I think initially, as we get closer to the election, I think we're going to see some fallout from this as well. All right. Well, today we're excited. We got a great show lined up. You know, yesterday I talked about and unveiled my political trifecta, right? That's relates to the top key areas that we need to focus on with this upcoming election that will directly impact our day to day lives. So today we have a candidate in the studio who's part of that trifecta, right? We're talking about city council, county commissioner and school board. And so Jeremy Kewin has joined us. He's a candidate for county commissioner here in Lancaster County for district number two. He's going to be joining us in the studio. And we're going to hear about why he wants our vote come November. Programming note for tomorrow, no show Husker volleyball against Illinois pregame at five, first serve at six. And you can hear that all right here on K L I N. All right, let's take a quick break. When we come back, Jeremy Kewin, he's going to be joining us. Plus you're going to chance, another chance to win more great prizes as we play fantasy Huskers right around the corner. And as always, you're welcome to call or text in the Hunt Irrigation Talkin' Text Line 402-479-1400. Thanks so much for listening to Drive Time Nebraska.
Got an opinion on the latest Huskers game? Fire off with a voice message in the free K L I N app.
Buying gold and silver can seem intimidating, even overwhelming. At Lincoln Coin and Bullion, we take the time to help you through every step. For those new to precious metals, we set aside a private, full hour, no obligation consultation. Our knowledgeable team are all members of nationally recognized coin associations and have earned an A plus rating from the Better Business Bureau. Call to schedule a first time consultation today. Nebraska's largest coin, currency and bullion dealer, Lincoln Coin and Bullion, where your precious metal needs are our priority.
Nebraska has one clear choice for cancer care and four extraordinary locations. Nebraska Medicine Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Centers, anchored by the state's only N C I designated cancer center with the most specialized cancer experts in the state and personalized treatment you won't find anywhere else. Dedicated to giving you the best possible outcome. Nebraska Medicine Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Centers, Omaha, Bellevue, Village Point and Carney. Find a location near you at nebraskamed.com/cancer. What do Omaha, Bellevue, Village Point and Carney have in common? When it comes to extraordinary cancer care, everything. Because that's where you'll find Nebraska Medicine Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Centers. Anchored by the state's only N C I designated cancer center, we pioneer leading edge research that results in life-saving clinical trials and treatment options. Nebraska Medicine Fred and Pamela Buffett Cancer Centers, four incredible locations, one extraordinary name. Find a doctor at nebraskamed.com/cancer.
Barb and Jim Ballard from James Arthur Vineyards. You know what? I think we've done just about every kind of event you can do at the winery.
Come to think of it, you're right.
Except for that time I wanted to.
Sometimes I wonder about you, but I never wonder about the great experiences we offer at James Arthur Vineyards. Whether it's for a special occasion, a corporate gathering, or celebrating a milestone in your life, we'll take care of all the details to make it a success.
Well said. James Arthur Vineyards. It's more than wine. It's an experience.
You're listening to Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald. Disagree with Doug, the guests, the topic? Call or text 402-479-1400 now to be a part of the show. K L I N weather brought to you by John Henry's Plumbing, Heating, Air and Electrical.
Mostly clear to partly cloudy this evening with the temperature dropping to around 60 by midnight. After midnight, mainly clear and cool with a low in the upper 40s. Thursday, mostly sunny to partly cloudy, warm and breezy, high temperature in the low 80s. From the 10 11 Weather Center, I'm meteorologist Brandon Rector.
K L I N Time Saver Traffic delivered by Paesano's Lincoln's Best Brick Oven Pizza.
On the downhill side of our drive time traffic, no new accidents or major delays. Most traffic moving well, a few volume slowdowns. We do have a slow spot west O Street at Capital Beach Boulevard, an earlier injury accident. Still in the cleanup stages. Do watch for slowdowns in that area. Keep in mind, O Street in the downtown area, 13th to 14th, that area is closed for a water main repair. Built to work around that area. Work continues on Layton Avenue, 48 to 56, that is closed for paving project. If you come across anything that slows you down, call the traffic hotline 402-479-1414. Keeping you moving with Time Saver Traffic, I'm Chris Offgren.
Now back to more Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald on 1499 three K L I N.
Yesterday I dug into what I call my political trifecta as it relates to the top key areas that we need to focus on in the upcoming election that impact our daily lives. A lot of times we talk about, well, who's going to be president? Who are you going to vote for? Or hey, last night we had the, you know, the vice presidential debate or who's going to be Senator? We hear a lot of ads for that. But the reality is your daily lives are really influenced by three main races that are going to be going on in the area of city council, county commissioners and school boards. And that's what we're going to talk about today. We're joined by a candidate who's running for part of this political trifecta. Jeremy Kewin is a candidate for Lancaster County Commissioner, District number two. And I'm excited to have him in and kind of figure out why he's running and what his purpose is. So Jeremy, welcome to the show. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you so much for having me on. I, this is, this is one of those things where I've been listening to you. And it's kind of a, it's kind of a dream come true to be here and just be able to speak to Nebraskans. Just give you a little bit of background about myself. I moved here a few years back and I get the opportunity to be a pastor here in town at Christ Place Church. And I am the grateful husband of my wife, Don Kewin, and then we have three kids. Our oldest is about to turn eight, which is a big deal. We've had a lot of requests for what that eighth birthday party can be. And then I got a five year old named James and he loves playing soccer. And I got a three year old little girl named Haven, who is the absolute light of my life. And so, and so for me, you know, it's, it's such a privilege to be able to be a part of the Nebraskan community and to hopefully be able to contribute to the community at large through the county commissioner role.
Why did you decide to run for county commissioner? What was it that there had to be something that sparked that interest?
You know, there's been so many times I've been at a door and you just get that basic question, why are you running? And I think some people look at you and they're like, are you a glutton for punishment? Because, because anytime you're going to be in a service role, service requires sacrifice, right? So for me, it's a pretty simple two-part answer, which by the way, from the debate last night, I feel like I need to start this answer by saying I grew up in a middle-class household.
Did you?
It'd be, yeah.
Okay, there you go.
But growing up, my dad has been in law enforcement for over 20 years. And in Washington County, Arkansas, he's been a deputy sheriff. And I saw how the county interacted, not just with my dad, but with our family as a whole. And I can think of several specific examples where I saw the county do amazing things. Now, my primary point of contact was through the sheriff's office, then through our county sheriff. But I always just held the county in a high regard because I saw how a well-run county could have a drastic impact on the local community. Biggest case in point, our county sheriff, when my dad became a deputy, it was about 900 square miles in Washington County. And there would only be two to three deputies per shift. And one of those was the shift sergeant. After just a few years and focusing on, on, on how he could improve the sheriff's department, it went from being three deputies and one of those being a supervisor to six to seven deputies. And people were getting better calls for service. My dad wasn't having to run from one side of the county to the other for legitimate emergencies. And so I just always stored that back. And, and quite frankly, my dad just has kind of hero status in my life. And so I'm not a sheriff's deputy and being able to serve on the county in some capacity is just a huge deal to me. And then the other thing that happened, and I felt like this was a transitional moment in my life. When I was just getting into ministry, there was a guy who had several daughters in our youth group. And he was a county commissioner in Washington County. They call him justice of the peace down there. His name's Joel Maxwell, and he was just a mentor in my life. And he took me aside and, and we would have these conversations just about life, but then I'd get to ask him about what he was doing on the county board. And I would hear about how he was able to literally build a bridge to cut somebody's commute time in half. Or he was able to improve this situation or improve efficiency in the county courts. And I thought to myself, I want to do that. I want to have that kind of impact on my community. And so I have just been looking for this specific opportunity, literally since 2016. And last year I noticed that the chair where I live was coming up. And so I started laying out a plan and here we are.
That's amazing. It's, it is a sacrifice and you know that you've got a young family and you're being a pastor. I was a pastor for 13 years, so I understand it's 24/7. I always tell people, if you have a pastor that's serving you, make sure you thank them because it's 24/7. It involves mental, emotional, physical, spiritual, your entire family all the time. How will you plan on balancing this? How do you plan on, if you get elected, balancing this process? Cause you're involved within the community. You have experience. You have the background. Now you're wanting to step up and serve.
You know, fundamentally, I believe that the, the best parts of America come when people give sacrificially. When we look back at what we call the greatest generation, it was a generation of people who didn't know the outcome and the exact how of every situation, but they knew the why. And when you're completely committed to the why, the sacrifice becomes slightly more menial. For me, when it comes to the why, I look at the community that my kids are growing up in. I want my kids to be growing up in a, a safe community that has, that, that has families in mind. And, and how do you balance it? Well, I would tell you that I'm actually a firm believer that I think serving your community is probably more of a season of your life where you can come in and come out in different ways. And, and we see that in business where people will start a business and then, and then they'll run that business in a certain way. And then after time, they find a new niche, a new way to, to answer a need in the community. And I think the same can be true with a position like this, where you can come into it for four years and you can give a full commitment. And, and this is something that my wife and I have actually had pretty long conversations about because it is going to change our weekly dynamic. And so what are we committing to? Well, we feel like we're committing to contributing to our community and making sure that we're giving our every effort to help families like ours have a safe place to raise their kids and just experience the good life that Nebraska is known for.
Well, what I love about this is you're involved, you're, you're right in the middle of, of life, right? With your family, you know what the needs are.
Yeah.
Because you're experiencing them. And you know, for, for a lot of people that do run, they don't necessarily have that moment to moment, real life impact. And so that's what I like about, I think of Matt Schulte, right? Executive Director for Youth for Christ, making a huge difference while being on the commissioner board as well. And I appreciate that. So that's exciting. We're going to learn more about the key issues that Jeremy wants to focus on if he's elected in. Plus I want to find out if he wants to reduce property taxes. We've all been talking about that for months now. And if so, how he's going to do that. Your chance to play fantasy Huskers, it's right around the corner as well. Get ready to text in 402-479-1400. Cities from across the state, they're listening to Drive Time Nebraska.
Stay informed and stay engaged.
They keep me up to date.
K L I N, Lincoln.
First time buying or selling silver or gold, Lincoln Coin and Bullion is Nebraska's largest historic currency and bullion dealer with staff happy to inform and educate. Give them a call.
There's nobody like us in the United States Senate. Now I'm running as an independent because I'm frustrated with congresspeople all being millionaires and billionaires.
Dan Osborne is a pipe fitter from Nebraska who served in the U S Navy and then in the Nebraska National Guard.
The people are frustrated right now and people are hurting and I'm one of them. Elected officials are bought and sold by special interests and corporations, and that's what needs to change.
Retired career politicians back as responsible for the content of this advertising. Unauthorized pay any candidate or candidate's committee.
The parade of homes starts Sunday through October 13th with 24 homes located in all areas of Lincoln. Homes are open weekdays, five to eight P M. And Saturday and Sunday, noon to five. Admission is free. For more information, visit h b a l dot org.
Discover the difference with Oak Electric, a local woman-owned business offering premium electrical service at competitive prices. With over 25 years of experience, their master electrician is one of Lincoln's top experts. Their small dedicated team focuses on quality control and safety for your family or business. Experience the premium customer service you deserve. When life happens, call Oak Electric at 402-440-5969 because they always answer the phone. Oak Electric, where quality and safety come first.
You're listening to Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald. More of the show coming up on 1499 three K L I N. K L I N weather brought to you by John Henry's Plumbing, Heating, Air and Electrical.
Mostly clear to partly cloudy this evening with the temperature dropping to around 60 by midnight. After midnight, mainly clear and cool with a low in the upper 40s. Thursday, mostly sunny to partly cloudy, warm and breezy, high temperature in the low 80s. From the 10 11 Weather Center, I'm meteorologist Brandon Rector.
K L I N Time Saver Traffic delivered by Paesano's Lincoln's Best Brick Oven Pizza.
On the downhill side of our drive time traffic, no new accidents or major delays. Most traffic moving well, a few volume slowdowns. We do have a slow spot west O Street at Capital Beach Boulevard, an earlier injury accident. Still in the cleanup stages. Do watch for slowdowns in that area. Keep in mind, O Street in the downtown area, 13th to 14th, that area is closed for a water main repair. Built to work around that area. Work continues on Layton Avenue, 48 to 56, that is closed for paving project. If you come across anything that slows you down, call the traffic hotline 402-479-1414. Keeping you moving with Time Saver Traffic, I'm Chris Offgren.
Raising the roof, roof, roof on the issues that truly matter to Nebraskans. With the occasional net violation, you're listening to Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald on 1499 three K L I N.
Let's play some fantasy Huskers. What do you say? A chance to win gift cards to Valentino's Best of the Big Red. Keyword today is intercept, I N T E R C E P T. You got to text that in intercept 402-479-1400 for your chance to win. And after the next break, we will announce our winner. So text it in 402-479-1400. All right, today we're joined in the studio by Jeremy Kewin, who is running for Lancaster County Commissioner for District number two. Jeremy, let's get right into this. What are some of the key issues now that you, you know, you're a citizen and obviously of the, of the city and the county? What are the key issues that you're experiencing that you really want to work on if you get elected?
For me, the absolute top of the heap is public safety. The link between safety and prosperity is undeniable. Mass slows hierarchy of needs. To be able to make it to the top, you need safety, right? And I really approached this from a few different angles. One, I've already mentioned, my dad is a sheriff's deputy. My, my undergrad is actually in criminal justice. I've got an undergrad in criminal justice, a minor in business. Just because I found it so intriguing how we, how we go about maintaining safe communities. And there's a lot of different ideas there. And then I also bring it from an experience standpoint in that for years I was a volunteer chaplain with the Arkansas State Patrol. So not only did I bring a earned degree to it, not only did I see it in my household, but then I actually went out and experienced it in that capacity. And so one of the key things when it comes to public safety, and this is nationwide, this isn't just Lancaster. This isn't big cities or small cities or counties. It's the need for quality deputies. When you have a shift that you have divided up six people's worth of work, but you only have five people, you still have six people's worth of work, right?
Right.
And then when one of those five decide they want to take a vacation, God forbid, then you now have four people for six people's worth of work. And I see this as a key opportunity that I think I could really bring just some expertise in is, is having a commissioner on the board that has been out in the patrol cars to know what we're looking for whenever we're putting funding towards recruiting deputies. Cause we have a phenomenal sheriff's department. In fact, our sheriff, Terry Wagner, he is the longest running sheriff of Lancaster County. And, and I've met with him and, and in fact, he gave me his endorsement because we, I feel like we see eye to eye, not just from a sheriff's department perspective, but just a, just a county governments and values perspective. And so making sure that that linkage stays strong and the real tactical side of that is putting a heavy emphasis on recruiting. I think that's an opportunity.
You know what I love about that is we're fortunate to have Lincoln Police Chief Morrow on the show on a regular basis. And one of the things that they're doing is they, she's put a real big emphasis on recruiting because of the need for new officers to serve Lincoln. And to hear you saying this as well, we've seen, we've seen some violent crime that hit us over the last several months. It's fun to see the sheriff's department work with them, the Nebraska State Patrol, working with the Lincoln Police Department. And to solidify that and continue to grow it, that's so, that's refreshing to me.
Well, one of the things that's really going to take is some serious leadership because the way Nebraska is structured, there's a statewide law enforcement training facility. And each, each law enforcement entity only gets so many spots in that. And we're actually at a point in our county where we legitimately need more spots than we're allocated. Now, we don't spurn against how that was created and it works for a lot of the state. But there's some leadership opportunities here where we could actually partner with Lincoln Police Department to facilitate some of our own law enforcement training academies to allow us to make up some of the actual, the, the need for more deputies out on patrol. But that's going to take some innovative thinking and it's going to take somebody who, which I believe is myself, who, who brings real world experience to this area.
What other topics or issues are you looking at?
Yeah. For me, it's a, a really close second is focusing on core services. One of the things that I am so wearied of, not just in local government, but in state and federal government is government is trying to be all things to all people. And I believe fundamentally that government should provide two things. It should provide structure and accountability for families and businesses to thrive. Everything else outside of that is an extra that I feel should be highly scrutinized and evaluated. Are there some things that don't provide structure or accountability, but they're worthwhile? Sure, they are. But those are the key things. Those are the key environmental factors. You know, we live in an ecosystem of sorts. And if our ecosystem has a lean government that And if our ecosystem has a lean government that provides an accountability function. So that could be the courts, that could be city planning, that could be the sheriff's department. And it provides a structure function. So how are we going to allocate our lands? How are we going to upgrade our infrastructure, providing the structure so families and businesses can thrive? When you do that, you create an environment where your community can't help but prosper. And it's a place where people can thrive and, and, and it seems intuitive to me. But I think we're really erring by trying to do all things for all people. I would give this example. If you were raising a child and you just did everything for them, maybe the child turns out fine. But if you provided an environment for them to thrive, they're going to be able to come their own identity and they're going to be their best self. And I think collectively as a community, as a nation, we need an environment to thrive. We don't need to be told how to thrive.
What would, so along with that, what would be your, what is your leadership style like? How would you manage all of that?
Yeah, my leadership style is, uh, is direct. I believe that, okay, fundamentally as a leader, I believe that the best leaders help other people succeed. It's not about making sure your spot at the top is comfortable. It's about making sure everybody who would ask you a question and look to you for an answer, get your full attention. I think that whenever you have leaders who are in positions to, um, to truly facilitate something special and they give sacrificially, that's where you get these wonderful stories of the days of yore that people look back on.
So you've been going door to door, thousands, I'm assuming of doors that you've been knocking on. What are you hearing from the people of Lancaster County that's important to them?
Yeah, I mean, absolute top of the heap has to be property taxes. And, and I know that's the horse that everybody's riding, but, but it is, it's the deal, right? We just got our pink notice and it got passed with Lincoln Public Schools and the increase that happened there. And, and, and I would mention with the, the county specifically, if, if you looked at budgets from 2019 to 2024, you would observe roughly a 40% increase in county budget. And you would also observe if you looked at, uh, population data, roughly a two to 3% increase. Now, I know things are more expensive, but a 40% increase compared to a 2% increase in population isn't a sustainable trend and people are feeling it. They're feeling it and they're having to make kitchen table decisions where they're having to decide how much food they're going to buy. They're having to decide whether or not they can, they can let their kids play a sport at the Y. Because for me to always have to look at taxes going up, it just creates limitation. And so that's the first key thing that you're always hearing at the door. The second thing is, uh, why are you, why are you even running, right? And, and it's cool to see, this is one of the things that I think the news wants to push us towards. But my vast experience in this realm is that most people just want a place for themselves to work and raise their family. And this divisiveness of an extreme polarization, for sure. Our nation has some divisions that are very real that we need to address. But the vast majority of people that I've met, they're excited that somebody stopped by. They're excited that somebody just wanted to shake their hand, uh, hear about what concerns them. And then step up to represent them in any capacity, in this capacity on the county board.
We're talking about having a lean government.
Yeah.
And families at home around the kitchen table happen to have a lean budget.
Yeah.
And that's, I've been telling people on the, we've been talking about it forever, telling blue in the face. This can't, we can't sustain this anymore, especially with property taxes. Property taxes are breaking people at this point. People are having to leave their homes, sell their homes, move because they're, you're, you're jumping 20, 40, 50% in some cases over the last several years and people's assessments and then property tax, taxes that they're paying. What would you say in as far as maybe first steps of how do we, how do we deal with this problem? Cause that's the big question right now.
It's a two-part thing. The first thing just goes back to focusing on core services. I could take you to a county board meeting agenda where we funded a nonprofit to provide services inside and on behalf of kids in Lincoln Public Schools. Now, am I for Lincoln Public Schools? A hundred percent. My son attends a Lincoln Public School. Am I for an advocate for children in the Lincoln Public Schools? 100 times over. But is this a county service? I think in order for us to address property taxes, because there's a lot of hands that go in that bucket. Every hand that goes in that bucket has to focus on what they're called to focus on. So is what the county passed within the past month, is it inherently wrong? Is it unethical? Absolutely not. But I could also take you to a bridge in my district that you're starting to see the foundational pilings. And the 60, I believe it was actually $72,000 that was allocated towards that. Could we have put it towards that bridge that serves an undeniable core function of our county calling as a government? Of what we're actually accountable for to the people. This is why they're giving us, uh, their trust and they're electing us. The other thing that I would say specifically to the most recent Lincoln Public School measure is that I don't disagree in what they're doing, or I don't disagree with what they're doing. I disagree at the pace with which they're doing it. Because essentially what, what we've seen is they knew that that state funding was going to be adjusted. This is in a funding equation that has been in place since the nineties. And they got more in property taxes, it just didn't exactly equal out. So if I'm a family sitting around a table and we had plans, but the budget didn't come in the way we thought, then we have some options. We can put it on the credit card, which is probably not our best plan, or we can make adjustments. The only problem is in this case, the credit card is every property tax owner within Lincoln. And so it's not that I disagree with what they're doing, it's the pace at which they're doing it. I feel like we could have reevaluated and said, hey, there are some projects that we've been looking at that at this time, we're going to have to defer because we want to focus on paying our teachers. We want to focus on, on improving the classroom experience. I believe in that a hundred percent. But I guarantee you, if we dug into their budget, there could be some projects that could equate to about the $7 million that was the difference that would give us an answer there.
See, that's the key. And I, I had talked, I had actually had a meeting this last weekend. We were talking about different budgets, city budgets, school board budgets, um, airport authority budgets. And you look at those budgets and those line items, it's like so confusing. I mean, for anybody to even go through those to figure out, but that's what needs to be done. And it's refreshing to hear that. So let's take our final break here. When we come back, I'm going to ask Jeremy if we can trust him, trust him at his word. That's what you want to hear. That's what you've told me about the candidates that come in, uh, as he's laid out his priorities. And I'm excited to hear his answer to that. All right, we're still playing Fantasy Huskers. The word intercept, text it in 402-479-1400 and then we'll pick a winner. Thanks so much for listening on your drive home today. We'll be back in a couple of minutes.
You can call if you want to, or my guess you can text. Either way, the number is the same, 402-479-1400. The Hunt Irrigation Talk and Text Line. Hunt Irrigation, the water smart company. You're listening to Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald. Sports nightly is next on 1499 three KLIN.
This is Tom Osborne. Recently, there's been a little confusion as one of the Senate candidates and I share the same last name. I've never met that candidate and know a little about him, but I do know Deb Fisher. I believe that she's served Nebraska well in the Senate. She works hard, travels the state extensively. Her 12 years of service have given her seniority and influence. This gives her a much greater ability to serve the people of Nebraska.
Coach Tom Osborne is right. Deb Fisher brings big wins for Nebraska. Deb fought to build new veterans health facilities here in our state. She's protecting our farmland from being purchased by China. And Deb wrote the law to make our neighborhoods safer by making it easier to recruit and retain police. Join Coach Osborne's team, Deb Fisher for Senate.
I'm Deb Fisher, candidate for U.S. Senate, and I approve this message.
Paid for by Deb Fisher for U.S. Senate.
Have you been suffering with foot pain, knee pain, lower back pain or plantar fasciitis? Do you feel like you're putting your life on hold? Maybe you've tried all kinds of remedies with no relief. You might even be considering surgery like Kathleen.
I was buying new shoes every three months. It was terrible. I was in tears a lot. It hurt that bad. For two years, I was watching these commercials thinking this can't be real. You know, you're never going to find out if you don't try. So my legs and my feet do not hurt like they did before Good Feet.
And Dave is also a satisfied Good Feet customer.
Whether you're young or old, these are life changing. I've tried the rest, the best is Good Feet.
You deserve a better life too. Come to the Good Feet store today. Visit the store at 27th and Pine Lake Road across from South Point Mall, or book your free fitting at goodfeet.com. Good Feet, because you deserve comfort in your life. Good Feet arch supports are proudly made in the USA.
Does your business need quick competitive financing for heavy machinery, trucks or other equipment? Currency is here to help. Whether you're financing construction equipment, farm equipment, trucks, trailers, or any other big ticket item, Currency will automatically find the best rates. Currency facilitates loans for up to $500,000 with repayment terms up to 72 months. It's fast, easy and free to use. Visit gocurrency.com and apply today.
You're listening to Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald. More of the show coming up on 1499 three KLIN. KLIN weather brought to you by John Henry's Plumbing, Heating, Air and Electrical.
Mostly clear to partly cloudy this evening with the temperature dropping to around 60 by midnight. After midnight, mainly clear and cool with a low in the upper 40s. Thursday, mostly sunny to partly cloudy, warm and breezy, high temperature in the low 80s. From the 10 11 Weather Center, I'm meteorologist Brandon Rector.
Training trees on the issues that truly matter to Nebraskans with the occasional technical or two. This is Drive Time Nebraska with Doug Fitzgerald on 1499 three KLIN.
Tania, congratulations, you are our winner for Fantasy Huskers. Congratulations on that. Your name is going to be thrown in the hat for the Valentinos and Best of Big Red gift cards. Your next chance to win is tomorrow morning on L and K Today with Jack and Friends. And also, um, not tomorrow afternoon, but Friday afternoon, because tomorrow programming update, we are preempted by Husker volleyball playing Illinois, which is awesome. They've been doing great. Love our volleyball team. They're doing an awesome job. So pregame starts at five, first serve will be at six o'clock. But today we're joined live in the studio by Jerry, Jeremy Kuehn. Uh, he's running for the Lancaster County Commissioner, um, District Number Two. And one of the things that we brought a lot of, you know, obviously politicians and candidates and, and we've looked at petition issues as well. But one of the questions that our listeners have, I have is how do you know that you can trust somebody at their word with what they really want to do and what they want to achieve? And so you've laid out your, some of your priorities, not everything. And by the way, you can go to your website, jeremykuehn.com, correct, for information?
Yeah, last name spelled K U E H N dot com.
Go there, you've got everything listed out. You've got some great blogs, by the way, we didn't get a chance. I wanted to dig into one of them, but we didn't, we didn't have enough time to be able to do that. But, um, how can we take you at your word?
One of my favorite ways to evaluate somebody's commitment is to look at what is their skin in the game? For me, I'm not looking back at my life. I'm looking forward at my life, just to, to make sense of that statement. I'm 34, uh, I'm raising my kids here. I am invested in a local church that wants to pour out into the community and just be hope and light. And so I evaluate people's level of commitment and my level of initial trust based on their skin in the game. And I don't just need to go and get an office for four years. And we're also very, very blessed. I don't need this job. But what I, what I do need is I need a place to raise my family. Uh, I need a place that is creating a safe environment. So not just myself, but, but the people that I also attend church with and the community partners that we have come together with can continue to function in, in, in ways that are at their highest levels. And so for me, it's harder to imagine a life where you have more on the line. I would also say that, say that I'm, I feel like I'm running on the values that, 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 that have really built America into the powerhouse that it, that it is. The values of sacrifice, the value of that it's not, it's not just about a momentary gratification. It's not, it's not just about what we can do over the next few years, but it's about what kind of momentum can we create that the next generation can pick up and run with?
How will this impact our kids and grandkids? I've been asking that question ever since we started the show. It's a focus of what we do. Now, every single vote counts.
Yeah.
Every single one, as I looked back, um, your opponent, Krista Yocum, uh, beat Eric Underwood by a little over 1,200 votes in the last election in 2020. How are you going to get across the goal line?
You know what? If you look back one election before that, I believe it was only about 140.
Really?
It was, it was skin of the teeth, man. You know, for me, the, the way that we're going to win this is by gaining the trust of our voters. There is no, there is no magic formula, there is no shortcut. It's just by providing, uh, a solution that truly speaks to the kitchen table needs that our people have. And so how do we win it? It's not about money. It's not about labor. It's about, it's about running our campaign in such a way that inspires people to look at what we represent, at what I feel like I represent and saying, yes, I want to be a part of that future.
And again, how can people get more information, find out what you're doing, where you're at, find out what your focus is?
You can find me on Facebook, of course. That's what everybody has, right?
Yes.
But it's, it's Jeremy Kuehn for Lancaster County. And then also my website is just my name, www.jeremykuehn.com. Last name spelled K U E H N dot com.
Well, Jeremy, thank you so much. This was, uh, it's great, it's refreshing. I'm 55, so it's, it's great to see a young'un. I can say young'un.
Sure.
Uh, step up, because we're starting to see more and more youth, I say youth, but younger people get involved in, 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 in the political area to help. And I think it's great. So good job.
Thank you for the opportunity and thank you for your time.
Absolutely. If you want to listen to the podcast of this show, go to kln.com or your favorite podcast platform. Again, we want to thank Jeremy for coming in. My producer Wyatt, and guess what? There's only 164,400 seconds left until we see each other again, my friends. I want you to seize everyone, have a great night and we'll see you on Friday.
From the Momo Pizzeria and Restaurante Studios, we are the voice of Lincoln. KLIN Lincoln, K D D K eighty-three, Lincoln, K two fifty-seven, T N Lincoln. The is 1499 three KLIN.